Called the regular city commission meeting of June 10th, 2014 to order. And we stand for pleasure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Scott?
Yes.
You called me.
Sure, I'm filling in tonight, so.
Hold the roll, please.
Commissioner Foreman?
Here.
Commissioner Crisieck?
Here.
Commissioner Perry?
Here.
Commissioner Scott?
Here.
Mayor Metzger?
Here.
Thank you, Scott.
No problem.
You called in a lot of things.
I know, I can word lots of things.
All right. The first item on the agenda is consideration of the following minutes. The regular city commission meeting held Tuesday, May 13th, 2014, and the special city commission meeting held Tuesday, May 27th, 2014. Is there a motion to approve?
Mayor, I move the minutes of the regular city commission meeting held Tuesday, May 13th, 2014, and the special city commission meeting held Tuesday, May 27th, 2014 be approved as recommended.
Is there a second?
A second.
May we take a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisieck?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes, motion carries. The next item is consideration of the May 2014 dispersment report. Do I have a motion to approve?
Your honor, I move that the May dispersment report be approved as listed.
Second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, can we take a vote, please?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisieck?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes, motion carries. The next item on the agenda is consideration of the resolution recognizing retirement of Carl Swiskowski, chief of police. I feel the least I can do is read the resolution first, in honor of all these years, so allow me to please read. "In honor and recognition of 28 years of dedicated service, Chief Carl F. Swiskowski. Whereas Carl F. Swiskowski has been a dedicated employee of the police department of the city of Pleasant Ridge for 28 years, hired in 1986 as a patrol officer and promoted to chief of police in April of 2001, and whereas Chief Swiskowski has tendered his notice of retirement effective June 27th, 2014, and whereas his years of service has served this community well for many years, marked by exemplary dedication to justice and right, he was a conscientious, trustworthy, and loyal employee. And whereas, when the city hired this young man in 1986..." He had hair in his hair. "...he was just 29 years old, but demonstrated a clear understanding of what it meant to be a law enforcement officer in a small community like Pleasant Ridge. And whereas his performance of the duties and responsibilities of a police officer and chief of police has been characterized by excellent and constructive contributions to the police department. And whereas Chief Swiskowski has worked closely with many city elected officials, city administration, too many employees to count, and many residents in our beautiful city, earning their respect and friendship. And whereas the chief was a true goodwill ambassador for Pleasant Ridge, would never hesitate to tell anyone how proud he was to be a part of the Pleasant Ridge Police Department. And whereas Chief Swiskowski has demonstrated outstanding qualities of leadership and an excellent record of service during his 28 years of service to Pleasant Ridge. And whereas, his determination and tenacity for justice, his dedicated interest and devotion to right, and his willingness to go above and beyond the call of duty is deserving of recognition. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Kurt Metzger, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Pleasant Ridge, and on behalf of the members of the city commission, deem it an honor and privilege to present you with the certificate of appreciation for outstanding service. And be it further resolved that sincere appreciation of the city administration and all residents of Pleasant Ridge is hereby extended to Chief Carl Swiskowski, with wishes for a healthy retirement and continued success in all his future endeavors." You, I would expect quite a speaking. At least as long as your resolution. Right here, right then. Thank you.
Commissioners and mayor and residents of Pleasant Ridge, as you heard, I was hired on February 17th, 1986. And I came from another city as a police cadet, but this fulfilled my lifelong dream of being a police officer. And I didn't really prepare a big speech, so sorry. I want to thank you all for giving me the opportunity to serve you, protect you. And Pleasant Ridge, really, one of the big things is, I know so many of you, and you've become my friends, and just like family. So, it's tough. I had to make a decision, and I pondered over it for a long time, and wrote out a retirement letter, tore it up. Did it again, tore it up, and I just, I realized that it's time for me to go, but I'll always have you guys in my heart. And hopefully, I've instilled in the officers that still work here, that same dedication that I have, and I know they all feel the same way about you. We really care for our citizens and our residents, and the big thing is, if there is crime, when it happens, we take it personally here. And so, sometimes, you know, we try to go the extra mile. Sometimes, we can't solve everything, but we really try. And I really appreciate you guys letting me work here as long as I did, and I couldn't have asked for a better place to work. I've done a lot of things that even some big city officers have never done. In my career, I've caught a murderer, a bank robber, B&amp;E guys, but the best part, the best part of it all was that, I don't know, some of you'll probably remember, back in 86, there was a school bus that broke down on Woodward Avenue, and the kids were going to the Magic Bag Theater in Ferndale to see Forever Plaid. So, what I did was I called the DPW director, and I think at the time, it was Brad Wilson and Sherry Ball, and they got in their cars, and I got the kids in the police car, and we drove them down there so they didn't miss the thing. And that was more satisfying than, you know, anything I've ever done. And that's, that's what, you know, this city is really about, is people helping each other. And so, thank you very much. I'm not gonna cry! But I'll miss everybody! And, you know, I'm here, you can call me if you've got any questions. As far as, you know, someone to take my place, I've got ideas and suggestions, and I'll talk to Jim about it. And, you know, I'm here to help transition to a new chief, and just keep the department going in the correct direction. So, thank you very much, and I applaud all of you. Thank you.
Excellent. Okay. I guess, do I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Mayor, I move the resolution recognizing the retirement of Chief Carl Swiskowski. After nearly 29 years of service, be adopted as recommended.
A second?
A second.
A third. Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisieck?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes, motion carries. 29 years in the same place, it's wild. Not a bad kid.
Just to touch on what Chief had talked about, and it really struck me when he started talking about family, and I think that's really the key for this community, but also for someone who serves in law enforcement, I wanted to acknowledge also Chief's family, because I know, many years of service, he's had to sacrifice spending time with his own family to be protecting of ours. And I just wanted to mention that as well, that on behalf of my family, I wanted to thank him and his family as well.
Thanks. Okay. The next item is consideration of the resolution recognizing Mr. Alan Ciesek. I want to make sure I pronounce this right. And Mr. Michael Palowski. And once again, I would like to read this. I think this really represents, these two gentlemen represent the essence of what Pleasant Ridge is about, as far as volunteerism and taking charge and doing the work that needs to be done in the city. So allow me to read this. Whereas, here we go, whereas is again, but, "Mr. Alan Ciesek and Mr. Mike Palowski have lived in Pleasant Ridge for 23 years and always demonstrated the spirit and value of volunteerism. And whereas Mr. Ciesek and Mr. Palowski have dedicated over a decade of time, money, and hard work into the beautification of our neighborhood park, Hessel Park. And whereas Mr. Ciesek and Mr. Palowski took the initiative at restoring an otherwise nondescript park to a focal point of beauty with its colorful variety of flowers and plants. And whereas their presence at the park by either weed pulling, watering, hauling in compost, and otherwise careful attention to the look of our neighborhood, has shed light on how volunteer efforts by our neighbors continue to make Pleasant Ridge a great place to live. Whereas the city of Pleasant Ridge is proud to have residents like Mr. Ciesek and Mr. Palowski, and appreciate their efforts toward the beautification of Pleasant Ridge. Now therefore, I, Kurt Metzger, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor, and on behalf of the entire city commission and all our citizens, to hereby extend this expression of our sincere gratitude to Mr. Alan Ciesek and Mr. Mike Palowski for their dedication and outstanding contributions to Hessel Park and the city of Pleasant Ridge." May I present? Gentlemen, stand up, please. Whether you want it or not. If we had you turn this way, or turn your shoulder, look at me. We have somebody step up here in the sphere, if you open up the folder. Here we draw, and we can have you guys step in a little closer. Closer. There you go. Great. That's quite nice. Look right here at the camera, he's got smiles, one more for good luck. I need some smiles from you. Think of a good planting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And to whom are you going to complete the compost? Who takes over?
We don't know.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Oh, you're welcome.
Again, do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Mayor, I move the resolution recognizing the volunteer services of Mr. Alan Ciesek and Mr. Michael Palowski be adopted as recommended.
Do I have a second?
A second.
May we have a vote?
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisieck?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you again. The next item, no more resolutions. Consideration of the appointment of Mr. James Bruckman as the city manager for the city of Pleasant Ridge. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I move the appointment of Mr. James Bruckman as the city manager for the city of Pleasant Ridge, effective immediately be approved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
May we take a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisieck?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes, motion carries. Next, Amy will complete his ministry in the OSIP office.
I, James Bruckman.
I, James Bruckman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Pleasant Ridge City Code and City Charter.
The Pleasant Ridge City Code and City Charter.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of city manager.
Of the office of city manager.
And I will endeavor to secure.
And that I will endeavor to secure.
And maintain.
And maintain.
An honest and efficient administration.
An honest and efficient administration.
Of the affairs of the city of Pleasant Ridge.
Of the affairs of the city of Pleasant Ridge.
Free from partisan distinction or control.
Free from partisan distinction or control.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities. Thank you. Fine, okay. The next item on the agenda is public discussion. Items not on the agenda. If you have an item, please come up to the microphone, give us your name and address. And we would love to hear from you. What was this? Public discussion. This is your...
Your time, Rob.
You know this, huh? You know this well?
This is an easy one.
This is your section of the agenda?
This is it.
Fairwood, Rob. Rob Secadine Fairwood. I just want to say, congratulations to you. Let to Scott, you did a great job. Carrying the city. So, thank you.
Any other comments? We will close public discussion. The next item is consideration of governmental reports. I don't see much for governmental. Any governmental representatives? No, boy. You don't get by them. Okay, that was easy. The next item is consideration of the city commission liaison reports. We'll start with Commissioner Perry.
Okay. So, let's see. So, I'll start out with transit, because that's the more complicated one, so I want to start there. Is, right now, the, you know, the study that we've been working on and going to for the last couple of years is the Woodward Alternatives Analysis for Rapid Transit. And that first phase of that is wrapping up, which will, has developed a locally preferred alternative report, or an LPA. And so, now it will start moving into other phases, like environmental studies, and then the engineering and things like that. And so, those will also take quite a bit of time, like a year or close to a year on those different phases. And then, so our end goal is, hopefully, a vote for the RTA, by the RTA in November 2016. So, it's exciting. And what's been really nice about working with this group is, this is a group that started out called Transform Woodward, Transform Woodward Task Force. And it is six communities, right here in Oakland County, along Woodward Avenue, who, you know, they got together a couple of years ago, starting with transit-oriented development studies. And that really spurred into the complete streets and into this transit, and really helped get the Woodward Corridor as the front and center on this whole study, as the federal government has become much more interested and focused on, you know, on transit for, you know, mass transit for the country. And so, this has been, so it's nice, because this group has really tried to forge a way through this whole, you know, figuring out the best way in Detroit. You know, studies have gone on for years, and so this has been a really interesting group to work with. And what's nice is, as we move forward with this, you know, we will get into, you know, this group really supports some of the really important engineering issues that are going to have to happen, you know, with infrastructure on 696 for us, as well as, like, they're looking at the bridge down at Eight Mile as well. So, it'll be interesting going forward. Now, Mayor Metzger just spoke at a conference last week, the Better Transit, Better Business Meeting at the zoo.
Yes, I did.
What, how'd that go?
It was interesting, since everybody's starting to look at the need for transit, as we talk about the regional transit authority, and I understand the latest version of the budget, there's $1.1 million for the regional transit authority, we'll see if it gets through. But last week, it was about 100, a little over 100 people showed up at the zoo, and it was kicked off by Ron Kagan, the head of the zoo, talking about the importance of transit, just to get his workers and to get other people in and out of the zoo, but the whole issue was, talking about both the moral imperative, because it was brought by the Metropolitan Council of Churches, who were sponsoring the event, but it was also the business imperative of people both getting employees around the region, getting employees to come to their businesses, as well as getting customers to come. And perfect example was the head of the suburban showplace out in Novi. Novi has opted out of public transit. So, not only can he get people to come there to work on transit, but as he said, the state fair is now held at the suburban showplace. And a lot of the people from Detroit are not even able to take advantage of the state fair, now that it's been moved, they can't get there because there's no transit. And the whole idea of allowing communities to opt out, Macomb County, no communities have opted out. But in Oakland County and Wayne County, you've got a lot of opt-out communities that decided public transit wasn't important, they didn't want to pay taxes, and this whole idea that transit is a poor man's game, and it's not for business, it's not for folks to go to and from work, as well as go to and from events. So, this is a really tremendous turnout, I got to be on one of the panels with a couple of business people, and the second panel was represented from each of the four counties, Washington, Macomb, Oakland, and Wayne, talking about the importance and talking about support for the transit. So, it was a real good event, beyond some of the work that we've been doing with the other communities.
Well, it is, it's such a big discussion, and then it gets very, it gets more localized as you look at the problems, or sort of the ones that you have for your direct communities too. Like, I know Ferndale really looks, and, and actually, the developments south of Eight Mile, really look at that bridge as a barrier for a lot of development, and a lot of people being able to trans, you know, to get back and forth. Or, and then we, of course, have 696 and all those issues. So, it's kind of, it's interesting, because the nice thing about these six communities is they all really get each other's issues for their communities, and we all really support each other and understand we need to work as a whole to try and get something done. Now, getting into the planning commission, we had a meeting, I actually don't have the date in front of me, but we had, we had a great meeting a couple of weeks ago, we were discussing the, Cork is actually going to have a site plan review for the outdoor patio that's going to be located on Woodward. It'll be right next to the building, just south of the front door, and the site plan review will happen within this month, so we'll make sure it's posted, and you can, you know, you can check it out, you can come in here, you know, and participate in the meeting. And we'll keep you updated on that, though, because their plans are in. The Devonshire parking spaces, just north of that Fields Art Building, are still under discussion and review. And then, oh, I'll ask Scott later. They're, we're also, they're, they want to put in a walkway through the wall at the Fairwood parking lot, so that pedestrians can easily access from the parking lot, get out to the sidewalk, versus having to go through the driveway. And then, Concerts in the Park this summer are Wednesday, July 30th, and Wednesday, September 17th. And that is all. Thank you.
I just remembered, since I'm the data guy, I just wanted to throw out one number that I came up with when I was preparing for the conference. We talk about the importance of millennials, that that's what's going to drive this region, is going to help us, we don't, we're getting older, and we're not being able to attract young people. I was looking at the numbers, the Detroit metropolitan area is second only to Cleveland in having the lowest percentage of millennials in their population of the top 57 metropolitan areas in the country. So, we are dreadfully behind the time, but we are number three in terms of baby boomers. We're really doing well there. So, I have a lot of confidence, that we're not going to make it on the backs of baby boomers. So, we have to start attracting, and we know millennials wanting various options for transit. We're talking about various options. We want to be able to walk, we want to be able to ride bikes, we want to be able to take public transit, or cars if absolutely necessary. And so, until we start to get that, this region is not going to be able to compete with other regions across the country. So, that's enough of that. Okay. Commissioner Scott, Historical Commission, CAC.
Yeah, just a couple of quick ones. The Historical Commission had the home and garden tour this past weekend, and by all accounts, it was an absolutely wonderful event. I think there were more than 350 attendees that came to the event, and everybody had a great time. The funds that were raised for the event will go towards supporting the, and the updating of our historical building. So, congrats to everybody that participated, helped set it up, and also attended. It was a great, great event. The second one is on the, on our CAC meetings, we think we have one last meeting. We actually extended our timeline by a few days. So, we have a meeting on Thursday to wrap things up, and then a presentation should be given to the commission next week on all the outcomes of the CAC.
Just let me recognize one of the home tour, Bill and Jimmy from the back, the successful, the 31 Elm Park. Sorry, didn't mean to call you out. It was beautiful. Commissioner Crisieck, Recreation Commission.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to review one event we had late last month. The Recreation Commission hosted a bike decorating event at the community center on May 24th. We invited the children of the community and their parents and caregivers to come and decorate their bikes in preparation for the Memorial Day Parade, held the following Monday. We had a really nice turnout, we had a good group of kids and parents decorated their bikes, and then Monday, we actually had a lot of them show up to participate in the Memorial Day Parade. I want to thank Jaclyn Scully in particular, Sue Turpak, and Bridget Brown, they really, really helped make that a successful event, and I know all the kids had a great time, I know mine did. In that light, I want to talk about the next event the Recreation Commission has coming up. It'll be the Pleasant Ridge Family Reunion Day, and that will consist, we did it last year, we had a pretty good turnout, it was a lot of fun. We do sack races, tug of war, frisbees. We ask you to bring your own picnic to enjoy that evening, but you'll have the opportunity to hang out and relax with the company of your extended PR family. And that's June 17th at Gainsborough Park for the Pleasant Ridge Family Reunion Day. That'll be from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Gainsborough on June 17th. Another issue that the Recreation Commission is working on is the development at Gainsborough Park as far as the children's playground. We discussed various designs for equipment and vendors for equipment. We'll be considering those throughout the month, and then furthering that discussion at the next recreation meeting, which is June 25th at 7:00 p.m. We'll be discussing the playground equipment and what pieces we'd like to see installed in Gainsborough. Again, this is through the generosity of the Pleasant Ridge Foundation and their recent fundraising for that project, and we look forward to having a piece decided on for the children of this community very soon. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Foreman?
Yes, I have a few things from our friendly neighborhood Ferndale School District, fewer things than usual, since things are winding down. First, and most importantly, I think, is an update for our new, on the search for our new superintendent. As many have heard, Superintendent Gary Meyer had announced his retirement to be effective on June 30th of this year. On May 19th, however, Mr. Meyer announced to the school board that his resignation for retirement would be effective immediately. An interim superintendent is now in place. The search for a new superintendent had already begun, fortunately, so things were already in motion for the replacement and search process. Here's what has happened so far and what will happen very soon. First off, from a pool of 45 applicants, six highly qualified candidates were selected. Three interviews were done this past Saturday, I'm sorry, two last night, and one this evening. At the conclusion of tonight's interview, the board was slated to deliberate and select two final candidates. two final candidates. And then they would spend a day in Ferndale on Thursday and Friday with the community to visit the district and kind of see how things operate. Final candidates would then get a second interview with the board. For these final candidates, of course, this will take place at the end of each final candidate's day in the district. So they'll visit the district, then they'll have a final interview with the board. Selection of a final candidate will be done in a special meeting, date is undetermined. Official start date is also undetermined this time, but it will be soon. Like ours, all the meetings are open meetings, and the public is encouraged to attend. Next, I'd like to mention quickly something that occurred this past weekend. It was on Friday, it was the Roosevelt Elementary School June Fair, or at least they held it, but it was a district-wide event. It was a lot of fun, the weather was perfect, turnout was really good. Families from throughout the school district were invited to jump and bounce houses and on bungee trampolines, climb the rock wall, play midway games, enjoy musical performances from middle school jazz band and choir, and enjoy freshly grilled barbecue from volunteers in the neighborhood. Two of them Pleasant Ridge residents, I know, at least two. I know that my family had a great time. We waited quite a long time in line for the rock wall, and it didn't quite pan out for my daughter, but it was worth, it was really worth it, because the food was good. And I'll share that their favorite midway game was the one, it was a very large wooden face with a huge nose. You stick your hand up the nose and grab something gooey, and you get a prize. So it was gross, but also really fun and rewarding. Finally, I'll just run through a few events on the district calendar. Again, since things are winding down, it's pretty abbreviated this month. Again, this Thursday and Friday, parents and community members are invited to meet the two final candidates for the superintendent search. One per day, from 9:00 a.m. until 9:45 at the Harding Administration Building. This Friday, June 13th, is a very important day for another reason. It's the last day of school, of course, and it's a half-day. And it's also the beginning of our camping weekend, which someone right here knows all about. Of course, with that, we know that right around the corner, starting this coming Monday, is the Pleasant Ridge Summer Program, which has nothing to do with schools, but it has a lot to do with summer, a lot to do with fun. Just to confirm, summer is finally here. There's no snow, that's going to happen for a while now. We're done with winter, it's summer, and this proves it. Now, back to school business. It's coming Saturday and Sunday, June 14th and 15th, the Relay for Life events will take place and wrap up. This will be at Ferndale High School Track and Field. Residents are certainly invited and welcome to come participate and help support the cause to help fight cancer. Monday, June 16th, regular school board meeting at 7:00 p.m. June 25th at 6:30 p.m. is the program and technology meeting at Harding. And then finally, July 7th at 7:00 p.m., 777. The External Relations Committee meets at Harding. You can always get more information on the Ferndale Schools website, ferndalschools.org. And finally, I'd like to conclude my report tonight with my offering of sincere congratulations to all the many students in PR and beyond that have worked very hard this year. Now they're moving to a new phase, whether it be a new school, new grade, or completely new environment altogether. College, something else. So I wanted to applaud them for their hard work and invite them to start enjoying the summer. If you ever want to come after the summer.
On Friday.
That's it for me.
Thank you. Anything else? I see you have sunflowers.
Yes, there is a, the Woodward Avenue Action Association has helped support a really great effort that the gentlemen from Blossoms actually helped put together, Norm Silk and Dale Morgan, and they have, they are planting hundreds of sunflowers on Woodward Avenue. And for a donation of $75 to this, you can, and I'm sorry for the late notice, but tomorrow night, there is a wonderful garden party at the Chircole House. That's the Frank Lloyd Wright House that's on Seven Mile. And it is just such a, that place is just such a showplace, it's beautiful, and what they've created with their gardens, the element of privacy, but also, it's just beautiful, and it shows off that the environment so nicely. So that's it. So tomorrow night, you can donate by, let's see, you can, I'm sorry about that. Oh, woodwardavenue.org, www.woodwardavenue.org, and they can, they have a button on there so you can donate, or you can go right to the party and take your money there, take your donation there. Thank you. It's a beautiful event, though. Thank you.
Okay. The next item is consideration of the following consent agenda. Resolution recognizing June as Gay Pride Month, and resolution supporting local community stabilization and personal property tax reform. Scott, did you want to say anything about? Sorry, didn't mean to just grab.
No, it's okay. Yeah, the two items for tonight are just routine items. The one is for recognizing June as Gay Pride Month, and the proclamation is in there. And the other is a resolution supporting Proposal 1 on the August 5th ballot, which has to do with the personal property taxes and replacing that revenue that comes into cities. The state has removed personal property tax for certain levels of those payers, but had no way of getting the revenue back to the cities, which, you know, it can be devastating to some cities. It's not so much of a hit, like Pleasant Ridge, I mean, it is a small hit, but like cities like Warren and larger cities that have millions and millions of dollars, they're taking away from them. So those are the two items. Consent. No, you're fine. I was just looking at the item.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Your Honor, I move that the consent agenda be approved as recommended.
Second?
Okay, second.
Any discussion? Okay, may we take a vote?
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisziak?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes, motion carries. The next item is consideration of supplemental appropriations, number A-2014-002. I think we have Scott back.
Yeah, so tonight, we have supplemental appropriation, which is something we refer to as kind of a housekeeping item for the budget to get the line items and the departments in line with where, the way they actually are. You know, there's, the budgeting process is a highly educated guess as we go through that. And of course, there are some things that come about during the year that are over and above what we originally budgeted, or are actually under what we originally budgeted. So we have to make these appropriations so we can stay in line with state law, and we can make the budget a living document, which it is throughout the year. So this is the last one. We typically do two of these a year, one in about a six-month period, and then one near the end, because we're getting to wrap up the year-end on June 30th.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Mayor, I move that supplemental appropriations, A-2014-002 be approved as recommended.
Second?
The second.
Any discussion? Any questions? Okay, may we take a vote?
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisziak?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes, motion carries. The next item is a public hearing, solicitation of public comments on the 2014-2015 combined city budget, the proposed 2014-2015 millage rates, and the 2015 to 2019 five-year capital improvement plan. That, I'll open the public hearing. Okay. Touching it, all right. Close the public hearing. I was really counting on you. Okay, the next item is consideration of the 2014-15 combined city budget, the 2014-2015 millage rates, and the 2015 to 2019 five-year capital improvement plan. Mr. Petersak, you're on again.
Well, it's my pleasure to be able to bring this budget forward to the City Commission tonight. It's been a lot of, a lot of work over the last five months, as you guys all know, many workshops, getting everybody up to speed on municipal finance, which is, is a beast of its own, if I like to say. So, you know, before I, before I lay out some of the highlights as we go forward, I do want to thank the mayor and City Commission for all their input on the budget, and they, you know, like I said, the late nights, I think a couple of them were here till 11 o'clock, and it was, it was, it was fun. We were able to, you know, teach, teach you guys, I say fun, I know it's not, I look at it that way, you know, being able to, to show you guys exactly how it, how it works, and getting your input from a different perspective is always, always great. And I had said, at a couple of our workshops, I think, we had more budget workshops this year than I did in the last probably three or four years combined. So it was, it was, you know, like I said, a positive experience for everybody, I hope, and it was kind of a way to hash out some things, and there was never any real large disagreements, and we were all, and we all went forward and were able to come up with a document. So, and I, along those lines, I do want to thank the city clerk, Amy Dreeland, for her input and her help of putting together all the spreadsheets and going through numbers and double-checking my work in Excel sheets that would have errors here or there, because you just can only look at those numbers for so long before you start to, they all turn into like Bugs Bunny swear words above his head. So as we present the budget for 14 and 15, we present a balanced budget, but it's, it's not all rosy and as great as, you know, it looks on paper. There's cutbacks that have taken place over the last 10 years, five years, and even, even as we, as we speak. The revenues are, revenues are down, expenditures are up, even, even though we hit, we had some increases in taxable value the last couple of years here in Pleasant Ridge, we've been fortunate. Now we're at the point where the Headley Amendment starts to kick in for us again in the rollback. So we received a small rollback this year to our taxable value, .98%, I think, so it's, you know, tenths of a percent, but that only means that welcome back. It's going to just keep, it's going to keep happening as we see increases in property values, we'll, we'll keep getting rolled back. And it's, it's one of the really hard things to explain, the Headley Amendment and how it works, and it does what it wanted to do. It kept revenues and it kept the tax, the tax base level with the rate of inflation. So when we went back and checked the property, the property tax values, I believe that the number I went back to was just before Headley kicked in, in 79 and 80, and we put it in to an inflation calculator, we're collecting the same amount, basically, as what we were then, based on how much money is worth for a mill. So, you know, unfortunately, the rest of the world doesn't work that way, and costs, costs go up, and, you know, just the cost of gas and oil alone for things like police cars and healthcare and everything, all of the costs have gone up, and we've, we've done a lot here in Pleasant Ridge to be able to keep those, those costs in line, and to be able to keep providing high levels of service at the same time. So hopefully that, the residents don't see much of the, the impact of what Headley has done, because we've been able to somewhat insulate that. But we're, we're close to half of what we should be able to charge in the general fund from, you know, a levy of 20 mils down to 11.39, I believe it is for this year, 11.3094. So that's, that's quite the, that's quite the hit. And I know the Citizens Advisory Committee is looking at, at the budget, and they've, they're, they're close to finishing up their report, and they're, the facilitator for that group, John Zach, who was, worked in a number of communities, you know, he's amazed when he saw that number, how much it really has gone down. So that's where we are with that portion of just my little soapbox about Headley. So as we go forward with the, with the budget, we have, we do have the millage rate in there, and there are two small increases on the normal millages that we have, we have saw in the past, and a couple of the other millages are going down because of the rollback. But the increases are, the one on library services, this is the last year of our library contract, and as we are, as we are going forward with looking at a possible extension with Huntington Woods at this, at this point, when we're talking about the millage rate, we weren't quite sure what was going to happen with the library contract and what the possible costs of that could be going on into the future if the millage passes in, in November for the future. This year, we're able to levy for the, for the current year. So the millage, we, some recommendations from the administration, I recommended that we look at levying the most that we can in that account, not knowing the, the future of what the library contract's going to be, or the costs that go along with getting the contract for that. And so I believe it went up like .1 mils, .1, .12 mils. But what will happen with that account is, if we don't end up spending that money, it will, it will go in the bank, and we will lower the millage for next year, so it'll, it'll end up being a wash based on what the cost of the library contract is. So there is a small increase there. And there is also an increase to the pool and fitness center debt piece, the piece that pays the bonds. There's, this is year payment number 11 or 12, I believe, on that, so there's a, there's an increase on the actual amount that you start paying on toward the principal, where in the front end of the bond, you're paying more on debt, so we actually can start paying down a larger portion of interest, so we needed to raise that to be able to cover that. That is a, an unlimited, a general obligation, unlimited debt bond, so the city has, has to, has the ability to levy any amount that it has to be able to cover those payments. So that is looking at 1.5 for a total city millage rate of 18.6479. That's what we're requesting tonight. Along with some of the other, other highlights, the one, one thing that you will notice on here that you do not see the next agenda item for the ordinance for the water rates. That's because after we, a number of workshops and a number of discussions about the water rate, we've decided to keep the rate the same, so there will be no increase to water rates. And we, the administration was racking their brains on how we can make the water bills more manageable for people. We understand that it's, it's an expensive utility, and it's, it is what it is, the utility bill at this point. So we're, we're trying to make it, you know, so in, in August, people, residents are not getting, you know, these three and four, $5,000 bills that we see come into City Hall, or even the $1,500 bills that we see to come in to City Hall on a, on a number of occasions. So we, we thought about how, how we could go about doing that, so people would be able to manage their bill a little bit better. So we, we came up with an idea to, during the summer months and throughout the year, to add four more bills to the mix. So instead of receiving four water bills during the year, you actually will receive eight water bills, and during the summer months, they will be monthly, on a, on a monthly basis. So you'll see what your usage is on a monthly basis and be able to hopefully budget for that a little bit better, and not get the, the shock of having this very large bill come in, which would typically be the bill that was due on September 25th, would, would cover large portions of that. So we have a, we'll have a schedule, and we're planning on to start that on, with a bill going out here at the end of June, and be due on July 25th. And then we'll actually have six bills due on a monthly basis during that time period from July 25th to December 25th. There'll be a bill every month. And, and then from December 25th, you'll have a three-month bill that will be from, that'll be due on March 25th, and then another three-month bill that will be due on June 25th. And those, those dates are like that because of the way we, we're actually billing water, like the bill that's due, will be due July 25th, is the water you use from May 1st to June 1st, because we have to read the meters, process the bills, make sure everything's good. So we're, you're actually, a bill that you're getting due at the end of July is from a previous couple of months. So along with that, we'll take, we've So along with that, we'll take, we've taken the recycling charge that is on the water bill and will that will be spread out over those eight bills instead of four bills, so it goes it gets essentially cut in half off your bill down to twenty-one dollars and twenty-one dollars and sixty-eight cents. And a meter charge on the bill of two dollars per meter, which will end up being a slight increase over the eight bills, and some of that is to cover the additional billing, the mailing of the the additional four bills. So it seems like there's a lot of bills in that six-month period, but we have only added four because there would have been a bill due September twenty-fifth and a bill due December twenty-fifth anyway, so it's just adding the four more during the summer. So Darren, we did the reads already for that, May to June, and Darren's actually run them through the computer, and we've already seems like, you know, it looks, the bills look much more, you know, friendly, I should say. One of the higher water users in the city that we checked, their bill comes out to, for that one month, the one-month period, to like two hundred and one dollars instead of this large fifteen hundred or two thousand dollar bill that they would get, so we hope that that's gonna be able to help people manage that bill a little bit better and be a little bit more friendly. So along with that, we have implemented the ability to pay online too, so you won't have to, you know, don't have to necessarily come to City Hall and pay your bill or even do it in the Dropbox, you can go right online, pay your bill. There's a small, there's a small service fee because we use the county for that, but those are all spelled out on the website. So you're able to do that, and not that we enjoy having people come in and seeing them, but it's a convenience of being able to do that. And you'll when you start to see that, you'll see people be like, they process their payment like one o'clock, two o'clock in the morning, because some people are night owls and that's when they leave it up. Like, and we'll get an email, like, it'll be like a two o'clock in the morning. I have insomnia myself, so it's usually, I'm like, sometimes you'll actually see me reply to those, like, two thirty in the morning, and I'm sure they're thinking the same thing about about me, so. So that is a small and big change at the same time. It's not, this isn't necessarily going to lower your bill, but hopefully make it a little bit more manageable for the residents as we move forward and look at at possible changes or possible revamping of the philosophy of the utility bill as we go forward in the future, so. We'll get out some information to people on that, so when you see your bills come out, you won't be won't be shocked there, why am I getting a bill like that right now, and I usually don't, so we'll have that information out to people and you will be receiving a different bill structure on that, with the rate being the same as it was last year, again. As far as the rest of the budget, again, like I said, we we were very frugal, very conservative on numbers that we use and you know, the city hasn't, for a number of years now, been able to have large large projects in the budget that are outside of the scope of, you know, possibly the road projects and things like that. It's just the money for capital projects just isn't there any longer. So, you know, as we move forward, the city commission and the administration is gonna look at revenue avenues, whether that be being able to raise additional revenues through taxes, through cuts, or both. So as we move forward, I believe that that is what one of the things that I would recommend that the city commission look at is just to be able to, how can we keep solvent? Because we can't keep using bank account money and we have to set aside money for post-retirement care for people, or as we saw this year for payouts, when longtime employees leave, they have accumulated sick time and vacation time that took a large hit on that, because we had two this year, two of our longer-term employees. Now, those payouts are much, much smaller for the existing employees that we have now, but the chief and former city manager had some of the larger numbers on the payouts, so the city has gotten control of those numbers and they are less at this point, so as we go forward, we'll we'll look at that. But again, I'm happy to present this budget to you tonight, and if there's any questions that you'd like answered, I'd be happy to do that. Probably went a little longer than you wanted to, I'm sorry. I know, you know, I talked, I was gonna do a PowerPoint and actually I talked with Mr. Brockman today about, you know, going, as we go forward, some of the solutions to some of the things that we're talking about here, we'll have a larger presentation. Sometimes this room isn't most conducive for PowerPoints, and when we have a larger discussion about where we're gonna go from here, a PowerPoint would be more appropriate and we can get that out, but I know, I'm sorry, I was running around like crazy this last couple of weeks, I didn't get an opportunity to see that, but I know, usually I have some kind of funny equipment there, some Benny Hill music or something.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Mayor, I move the two thousand fourteen, fifteen combined city budgets and two thousand fifteen through two thousand nineteen five-year capital improvement plan be approved and that the budget resolution be adopted, including the levying of eleven point three zero nine four mils for the general fund operating, two point three eight eight zero mils for infrastructure improvements, one point six nine six one mils for solid waste and disposal, zero point four nine five zero mils for library services, one point two five nine four mils for community-centered complex operations, and one point five mils for community-centered complex debt service be approved as recommended.
Do I have a second?
A second. And before we vote, can I, I did think of something that I wanted to talk about, you know, we were talking about the water billing, you know, breaking up to this new system to try and make it more budget-friendly. But I guess I want to recognize, I want to make sure that the public knows that I don't, that this is not a fix for our water billing system. This is a way purely just to try and make your bills more manageable during these heavy your larger usage periods. And we are working on the other, and you'll be hearing a lot about how, you know, we'd like to move forward with that, but I want to make sure people know that we don't see this as the fix for our water billing issues.
Great. Good point, also to emphasize, you had made the mention that the rates are not going up for the first time in a number of years, so at least we've held them while we start to look for fixes to make it more palatable.
Yep, and that's exactly how it was presented when we, because we had a workshop to show a number of different methods to bill, and really that's what it comes down to. It's a philosophy of how you want to bill that utility bill, how you want to charge it, whether it's all utility bill, whether it's utility bill and taxes, or whether it's a mixture of the two, so really, we're just trying to come up with a way that it could help residents, you know, without changing the philosophy of it at this point, which is something that takes much longer than what, you know, it's not just boom, here it is and we're gonna do it this way, it's it's a year-long process to get a method like that type change. And we have been talking about it and working on it, it's just a matter of anything we could try to do is help to help residents manage their bill.
Well, and also, thank you, because I know this budget was really hard to do because of how, I mean, when you look at the budget amendment, I mean, the, what, unfortunately, because of how all the timing falls, there is some fund balance that is not going to be there, that it looks like is in the budget, that we've had to use to finish out the year, just because this budget is so tight and has been so tight for a couple of years, that it, you know, we end up with a significant change in that number moving forward, where it's like, as you were saying, it's like, we don't want to continue drawing off of our savings, off of our rainy day fund for our everyday, for our day-to-day budget.
And that's, and I was talking to Commissioner Perry on the phone earlier, and I'm sorry, I just wanted to make note of this, that we've taken things, you know, it looks like, oh, well, everything's okay, everything's okay, but we've taken things, haven't even brought them to the table because there's just, it's just not there. I mean, there's some larger repairs that need to take place on buildings and infrastructure sidewalks, a number of things that we just the money isn't there, so we don't even bring it forward because it's just gonna get, it's just gonna get cut and, and, you know, put it, put back, put back a couple of years, so. Eventually, what happens though is that these things, you're forced to do it, so, and it's like, oh my gosh, we have to do it, and then you end up you end up making a budget document that isn't true because you know you're gonna have to use the money in the bank for a roof repair, or this repair, or that repair, knowing that it had to be done, but they're just, the funds weren't there to be able to set aside for it, so.
We've been incredibly fortunate as a community in comparison to many communities in Oakland County. We actually have a fund balance, and there are many communities that have been working under deficits. So, I mean, that's good news for us, but at the same time, we're eating away our fund balance to just run. And that won't stop, because there's always something that we haven't planned for that has to get paid for during the year. And just the inflationary effects of things getting more expensive that we regularly do eat away at our fund balance. So it's a discussion we have to have as a community over the next few months on how we keep the bills paid.
And what was the, did you do the math of the percentage?
I think we're just a little under twenty percent fund balance.
That's where the auditors and the the treasury groups would usually want you to be at about between twenty and thirty percent. You don't want to have a hundred percent in there because you're just socking away money then, but you want to be able to operate for, you know, two to three months if all money was to stop coming in, so. We're still healthy, we're okay, but it's not it will continue to, you know, if you're not able to put, add to it, ever. I mean, even a dollar or two dollars, it's adding to it. I know it sounds ridiculous, but it's, any adding to it is better than drawing from it, so.
Well, I think the other point is, while we have a five-year capital improvement plan that includes things that need to be done, not just wishless things, but we can't do any of them. We're pushing them all back and we're not sure whether that money's gonna be there.
Right, and police cars are one of the things we would, used to, when we bought a police car, we would purchase a car outright. Now we actually finance the vehicle and what can happen over time is we can get into an area where we're paying for a vehicle that is just about to go out of service. So you're paying the same amount for a vehicle that is gonna be either going out of service in six months or could be out of service and you still have a loan payment on it, and you get into this an ugly game that will happen, and eventually your loan payments will end up equaling the cost of a car every year instead of being able to set aside that money, so. We've been able to keep our head above water and do things creatively, but eventually creativity only goes so far.
Mr. Mayor, one question for Scott. I've heard some things mentioned, I've seen an article in a local paper recently that kind of says Pleasant Ridge was able to develop a balanced budget in the face of, you know, tough times and all that kind of stuff. And I've heard questions, and people say, well, what's the problem? You've got a balanced budget. So I know a lot of us understand what this is, but a lot of us really aren't experts in municipal finance, and I'm still just learning myself, but without insulting anyone's intelligence, could I ask you just to explain why it doesn't mean everything's okay just because we have a balanced budget? I mean, I know you've gone through a lot of the reasons.
A balanced budget and, you know, the state law says that you have to present a balanced budget and give that to them, so when I'm talking here, I'm speaking on the general fund terms, the general fund portion of the budget. So we take all of our revenue sources and streams, which our largest is, of course, property taxes, and we equal that number out, and then we pit that against expenditures. So we'll have, here's our revenue at two point three million dollars, here is our expenditures, two point four million dollars. Well, now we have to find a hundred thousand dollars where we can either by adding to revenues or cutting from expenditures. And ninety-eight percent of the time, you start cutting from expenditures because your revenue, you you take out about as much as you can, you take it out as much as you can based on your, like, five-year average is what we usually look at. So we'll start and say, okay, here, we can go without this, we can go without this, and typically that starts with capital projects, capital-type things. But at the end, those two numbers, the revenue and expenditures, have to equal zero or a positive. So when we say a balanced budget, it is, it equals out to zero or adding, I think, six or seven thousand dollars to fund balance, but that's with a number of items not in there that probably shouldn't be, not putting any any money aside for a contingency in case something does happen, it's nice to have in there. Not putting any money aside for retirement healthcare, OPEB-type costs. Just a number of things that are not in there that could be. And probably should be. Is a better word. So, you know, well, we get down to, and me and Amy were sitting down this year, I mean, it was like okay, there's a hundred dollars here, it sounds ridiculous, I know, but it's like, okay, here, if you get enough of those, you can get to the point where you need to for some of these things, and it's not easy to get to that point and, you know, some cities will laugh when you tell, oh, our general fund is two point four million dollars. Well, we have the same costs that everybody else does. We're just not as big. Actually, we have less costs in a lot of those communities because we don't have our own DPW, we don't have our own treasurer, we've already gone, taken those steps to to cut back on those those costs. But balanced budget is revenues equal expenditures, and we've we are at that point, but with very, very little room to spare.
Mayor, I would just like to say thank you to Plant Moran for their work in helping with this budget, but also to Amy and Scott and the hard work that the two of you have done over the last few months to put this budget document together, and I'd also like to send my appreciation to my fellow city commissioners. We did have a few late nights, but overall, I think it was very productive. And I just wanted to thank everyone who participated in the process.
I know we made a motion to be seconded. Okay, can we take a vote?
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Criswick?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes, motion carries.
Ken, just one other quick thing that we did, I'm sorry, I wanted to let the city commissioner and residents, because it was talked about at the last meeting about the Economic Vitality and Center Program, EVIP. Legislative link from the MML today that House and Senate have removed the EVIP requirements for us to receive our statutory portion of revenue sharing, so this this work that was created, it was created work for, you know, people to not that it wasn't needed, but it's stuff that we were already doing, and it was just it was a ridiculous premise for us to earn this money that we were promised and already had coming to us. We'll still have to have the dashboard portion, but that is the easiest part of it, so.
So the money stuff?
The money still comes, yep, the money will still be there, it just will not have this these reports, yeah, you won't have to turn in number one, number two, number three, and right, it's just like, yeah, so that's, I know, it was nice for that to come through and yeah, but that is exciting news, and I think, you know, hopefully the state's on the right track with getting that revenue sharing back up to where the levels that were always promised to the cities.
So they're talking about a little percentage increase right now?
Yeah, and they're talking about it. Yeah, I think it was three to three and a half, but I don't believe that when when it comes through, but the actual, Senator Hobbit George said that he wants the word EVIP removed from everybody's he wants the word, uh, the EVIP removed from everybody's lexicon and not to mention it in the, in the House or Senate chambers anymore, so.
I made a special thank you.
Yeah, that's, that is, that's, I know it, it, if you had to ever do these reports and those that have done it before, I, I was thrilled this morning to see that, so.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
So, real quick, what, what kind of dollars are we talking about that we received?
Well, we, there's two portions, there's a constitutional portion and a statutory portion. Our statutory portion is around $42,000 to $45,000, and the constitutional portion is, uh, upwards of $200,000 plus. So, what we were doing these reports for, this one, two, and three, um, was for the, the $42,000 portion, so we'd get a check for, you know, $11,000 every, or $12,000 or $13,000 every, every, three times during the year. And for, if you complete these reports, then you had to go back and forth to Treasury about what was right and what was wrong. So, um, some cities receive more, some receive less, but we're, that's where our number is about. So, hopefully it'll be around $45,000 next year.
So, we'll continue to get it just with less.
We'll continue to get it.
To jump through.
Yeah, with, like it was always promised to us and, and the law set to, to help the cities, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Don't go far.
Nope, I'm not.
Actually, I have them, Jim's gonna handle the next item.
Oh, good.
All right.
Good, I'll know which way to turn. Uh, the next item is consideration of the 2015 to 2017 cooperative agreement between the City of Pleasant Ridge and the Oakland County Urban County Community Development Block Grant Program.
Yeah, they let me talk on this one.
Hey.
Considering today was the first, my first day here, and I've learned how to turn my computer on.
That's an accomplishment.
But, um, this is an agreement we have with Oakland County, uh, of course, communities get community development block grant funds, not like they used to, uh, which can be used for a variety of purposes, typically for low and moderate income areas, which we have done up. So, we've been partnering with the county, uh, for years on this. We get, I think, $5,000 every year, which we use for senior programs, which is one of the, um, permitted uses for that grant. So, we have to do this every few years to renew our agreement with Oakland County to just have them, um, administer the program for us, basically, so.
So, um, do I have a motion to approve?
Mayor, I move that the City of Pleasant Ridge resolve to participate in Oakland County's Urban County Community Development Block Grant, CDEG, programs for the years 2015, 2016, and 2017. Further, we resolve to opt into Oakland County's Urban County Community Development Programs, which shall be automatically renewed in successive three-year qualification periods of time, or until such time that it is in the best interest of the local community to terminate the cooperative agreement.
So, does this mean we don't have to go through this only three years, or do we still have to go through this?
Now, that I'm not sure.
Okay, all right.
I'll get back.
Any questions? Do I have a second?
A second.
Uh, any discussion? May we take a vote?
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisia?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes, motion carries. Uh, the next item is consideration of the Resolution and Administrative Service Agreement between the City of Pleasant Ridge and the ICMA Retirement Corporation for Vantage Care Retirement Health Savings Plan. Did you say?
Do you want to talk about yourself?
I, I think I can take this one. This is, this is basically just authorizing the city to establish the, um, defined contribution programs. And, and actually, one, one change is that there's also the 401A program, which is exactly the same contract and wording, just with a different name at the beginning of it. Um, that came through today. So, uh, that would authorize the city to start the direct contribution, defined contribution retirement programs.
Instead of the defined benefits, if you.
That's right.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
Mayor, I move that the Resolution and Administrative Service Agreement between the City of Pleasant Ridge and the ICMA Retirement Corporation for the Vantage Care Retirement Health Savings Plan and the 401A Retirement Defined Contribution Plan be approved as recommended.
Do I have a second?
Second.
May we take a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisia?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes, motion carries. The next item, consideration of the appointment of Mr. John Horvath to the Pleasant Ridge Historical Commission to fill an expired term, term to expire December 31st, 2016.
Mayor, I move that the appointment of Mr. John Horvath to the Pleasant Ridge Historical Commission to fill an unexpired term, term to expire December 31st, 2016.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Can we take a vote?
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisia?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes, motion carries. Um, the next item is the City Manager's Report.
I learned how to turn my computer on today.
There you go, okay.
Uh, actually, we do, we do have a few updates that, uh, are mostly coming from the Recreation Center. It's a big week for the Recreation Center next week. Um, starting on Monday, the swim team is starting outdoor practice, so they're emerging from the indoor pool. Swim lessons at the pool start next Monday, and full, uh, full pool hours also start next Monday. So, get your bathing suits ready. Uh, if you have any, any questions, contact Scott or Bridget over at the Recreation Center, and they can give you more details on that. But, uh, we're ready to go. The summer drop-in program, uh, also starts next Monday, so I think there's gonna be an invasion of kids at the pool. I'm sure that they've been getting ready, uh, for that. Uh, Jason talked about the family reunion event at Gainesboro Park next Tuesday, and then our next, uh, our first home swim meet of the season is Thursday, June 19th, so expect to see many, many cars parked down the streets over.
When is that?
June 19th. And I'm not sure what time that is, but in the evening, for sure. And that's all I have. I anticipate, you know, this is, this has been probably one of the easiest meetings of my career.
I think the honeymoon ends after.
We'll work on that.
Enjoy it while you can.
I'd like to help change that a bit.
Okay, good.
I wondered, Jim, or maybe Scott, I'm not sure, you, you decide, if we could get an update on the, um, the county animal control situation that we've heard chatter about on Facebook and such. There were some miscommunications there, I wonder if you could just kind of fill everyone in.
Uh, I, probably Scott is much better equipped to give that update than I am.
Yeah, so there was, uh, Oakland County, in April, the city commission approved to, uh, go to the county to, for animal control, and along with that, they, uh, resell county licenses instead of the Pleasant Ridge ones, which, you know, we had talked about. And, um, at that meeting, we had talked about a, a pet census that the county will do, and they'll go and knock on doors and find out how many pets you are, and, and they will hand you a, um, a warning notice to, to say, come in and get your dog licensed, because part of it is that that's how they pay for animal control, and it is a state dog law that all dogs be licensed. And it is the responsible pet owner thing to do. So, it's, it's funny that you mention it, because today in the mail, we received from the county a letter saying that they were gonna be doing a pet census starting on June 9th. The letter dated, the, the letter dated June 6th, so that means they would have put it in the mail and, and the business on Friday, and we wouldn't have, we received it today. So, they, they have been knocking on doors and telling people, you know, giving them this, these notices. So, the miscommunication between two county departments, I, I want to, I, I don't wanna throw the county under the bus, but on, on this part, they, um, we'd sent them all the licenses that we sold from Pleasant Ridge from December to, um, the April date, or the May date, when we started selling the county licenses, we sent that to them , uh, late April to animal control. So, I guess the census survey team never received that list from them. So, um, they were knocking on everyone's doors, which I think they were going to do anyway, but what they were saying is, is that the person couldn't produce their license, like, either show them the tag or show them a receipt from the Pleasant Ridge license that they had. They were still handing them the citation and saying, well, we don't have proof that you have it, and we didn't receive a list from the city. So, I contacted Animal Control, uh, the survey department yesterday when we found out that this was going on, and, um, she said, no, we never got the list. So, I immediately sent them a list, and I said, please tell your officers not to tell our residents that you didn't receive the list because it was sent in to you guys, because it looks like, you know, it was, everybody kinda looks like they dropped the ball on it, and, and that, that's not the, the case, that we wanted to, uh, the pet census is taking place no matter what. Um, it's just that they would have had this list to show that these Pleasant Ridge licenses were there. So, if you, if somebody knocked on your door, asked you about pets, and they handed you the citation, and you do have a license, um, they have that list now, um, in the office, but I would still call the number on the, on your citation and say, I had the Pleasant Ridge license, here's the number, here's my name, and leave a message, because you will, you probably will not get ahold of a person, but they will call you back. It's just, the pet census is going on in a number of communities right now, so a lot of people are calling. So, um, I called, left a message, and received the call back in about a half an hour yesterday. So, um, if that's the case, just call and let them know, hey, I had this Pleasant Ridge license, or, um, I went and bought my county license from Pleasant Ridge today, here's the number. Um, you can buy here, um, at City Hall, you can buy at the county, you can purchase online dog license, or a, a number of vet offices also sell them. So, you're able to, um, there's a number of opportunities to buy those, those dog licenses now. So, um, that's where we are with that. So, I, it, it was less confusion for people today, um, but unfortunately, we were, we were notified a little bit after the fact that the date that they were gonna be starting this, and we're gonna call Animal Control and let them know that, hey, a little bit, you know, a couple weeks' notice would have been, would be nice to, to let us know. And, I mean, even the letter says that up to 20 census team workers will be going door to door, so they have a number of people that, that do this.
Three.
So, yeah, they're all over, and they wanna get a good, just for their own records, they wanna have a, a, a pet number, a, a number, and it's helpful for us, too, because there's a lot of dogs here, especially in Pleasant Ridge, and there's a number of people that don't have, don't have licenses for whatever reason. So, we wanna make sure that everybody's doing the, doing the right thing on it. So, if you have any issues with anything, let us know, um, and we'll, uh, we'll try to help you out with it. And, um, we had a number of people come in and get licenses the last couple days, so.
So, you were saying that, um, until, if you do get their voicemail, to make sure just to leave a message?
Yeah, just leave a message, your name, or even if you say, you know, um, I received the citation, I went to Pleasant Ridge City Hall today and purchased my license, they'll have the information, but just leave a message, say your name, here's my license number, and, um, and your address, and they'll, they'll mark it off the list, and they won't come back and visit you with a, with a ticket.
Perfect. I know someone was concerned that they couldn't reach a person, but, so that's great to hear.
Yeah.
That they're, they're reactive, responsive to their voicemail.
Yep.
Great.
Yep, definitely.
Couple of quick follow-ups. Is the current census complete? If not, how much longer will it be going on? Do you know?
Uh, I'm not sure if they finished up today. Uh, I didn't have any contact with the county, um, this afternoon, but we can, um, we can give them a call in the morning and see where they are with, with it. But I would think that they'd be close to being done. They started yesterday and today with that many people. Um, they should be, uh, should be close to being finished.
They knock on every door?
Yes.
Yes, they, I, yeah, so I, even if you have, like, the county license, they were knocking on people's doors to verify that if you have one or two dogs, even if you already had a license. So, it's just part of their, uh, part of what they do in all the communities that they, they sell licenses in.
One last thing, is annuals? Annually, they do the census, or less frequently?
Uh, I'm guessing that it's probably annual, yes. We, we, I don't have confirmation on that, but I would suspect that it is annual. I believe that's what they had said when we met with them originally.
In the larger communities, they do a biannual census, but in the smaller communities, they do an annual census.
Okay, with that changing, we'll, we'll keep everybody updated on that.
Thank you.
And then the cutoff, and, and, uh, pet owners probably already know this, that what, there's a June 1 cutoff?
The June? Yep.
There is a, um, a higher fee at that point.
Yes, um, it's.
Because it goes January to January, or?
Yep, and, and, and for our Pleasant Ridge licenses, it used to be March 15th, where the, the fee went up, but when we changed the county system, it's just June 1st. That's their, that's a cutoff date for, um, the late. The other change is, is that we would have, um, if, for your rabies, you'd have to have a, when Pleasant Ridge was running, you'd have to have a valid rabies through the end of the year. So, if you wanted to come and get a 2014 license, your rabies would have to be valid past December 31st of 2014. With the county license, it just, it has to be in the calendar year, valid, at least, if it could be January 3rd, 2014, and you can buy a 2014 license. If you have a licensed, or a rabies vaccination that goes through right now to 2016, you have the ability to buy a three-year license. So, you only have to come in and get a tag the one time in three years, so. So, there's some easier opportunities for people to obtain those licenses, it's just, you have to obtain them.
I have one more.
No?
Part of the motivation for the licenses is not purely to generate revenue as much as it is to motivate the, the pet owner to get the rabies vaccination, correct? I mean, you have to have that to get the license.
Absolutely, and I was just talking with the chief today that, uh, the rabies cases nationwide seem to be going up because, you know, for whatever reason, that people don't get their, their, their dogs, the shots. But, um, yeah, it's, it's important to have, be a responsible pet owner and make sure you're getting those rabies vaccinations, and make sure you have a license, license on your animal. There's, I don't know how many times we've, the police have picked up an animal, and it's, it's not licensed for whatever reason, and it, and it happened to be a Pleasant Ridge animal, and it would have been so much easier and so much less grief on the, even the pet owner to, we've been to look at the tag, find the number, call them, and get them their animal back, instead of a process to try to find whose animal it is. It's just, it's, there's lots of reasons for that, licensing rabies, and, you know, being able to identify a dog. So, good.
And pay for the facilities to house them where they're.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, I mean, right, there's all, there's, the, the revenue is, is part of this, too, but that's, you know, the, if you get your license on time, it's only $7.50 for the dog versus being neutered dog, so it's still, it's the same price that Pleasant Ridge is charging at times, so.
Thank you for all the time. Any other questions, Dan?
Um, just wanted to, with you, we monitor Facebook a great deal, and certainly the dog issue is one, but the other question is, is Ben Affleck living in Pleasant Ridge?
So, until, uh, until, uh, Mr. Affleck comes with a Pleasant Ridge driver's license to come to use the pool, um, yeah, I would say that he does not, he does not reside in Pleasant Ridge.
Because he'd be there.
Right, he'd be there.
He'd be there.
And, and if his license doesn't say Pleasant Ridge, then guess what?
But that's right, does he have a dog?
Right, you're right. You may have, but you may have a dog, so we've, uh.
We're gonna make it as unpleasant.
It's Boston's dog.
Yeah, I always tell the, you know, the, a guy came in, I was renting a house here to play down one of the sports teams, and he's like, you know who I am, I know who you are, you know. Drivers like to say Pleasant Ridge, and I get in the pool.
Right.
Here we are.
I will let Ben and Jennifer use my extra pool pass.
There you go. I don't, we heard some rumors, but I, I think that's all they are at this point.
About every week, a new group are passing out.
Every, every, every.
There's rumors, so.
I'm just, I'm just checking because it's the thing I need.
It's been seen at Holiday Market.
That's true.
And, um, one, one other thing, real quick, I, I again wanna thank the, the city commission for, um, you know, the last seven months of, uh, helping me work for you and, and do what I thought was a, a good job, and, and I, I believe you guys felt, felt the same way in the end, and, uh, it was, I, I believe, a pleasure, pleasurable experience after, you know, some of the hurdles that we jumped over, um, to get where we are. And, you know, on behalf of the staff, one welcome Jim aboard, and I've already been in his office probably too much today, just getting him, uh, up, up to speed on things, but, uh, there'll be many more, um, I'm sure. So, we, um, on behalf of the staff, Jim, welcome aboard, and we're ready to, uh, to kick in and move forward, so.
Nice.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Well, as I, as we've said before, we have a great team going forward, and you wanted to say one more thing.
For everybody that's here, we are having a, a small, short reception for, uh, welcoming Jim aboard, just right in the back of City Hall, just some desserts and some small finger things, so, um, just, just wanted, you know, that's, that's, we, we feel it's the right thing to do, to welcome Jim to the team, and, uh, and, you know, gives out, give the and, you know, give the residents in attendance.
Desserts are always there.
Thank you.
Are there any other business issues? Nothing?
I have something for you.
Yes.
I just want to let the residents know that tax bills will be mailed on or about July 1. Sorry, I know.
End on happy days.
End of the meeting is the bad news. So they'll be mailed out on or about July 1. If you have not received it by the second week in July, give us a call, we'll get you a duplicate copy of that bill and some coupons if you need them. And then the second thing I have is the last day to register to vote for the August primary election is Monday, July 7.
Any questions there?
Yes. I just wanted to say that the book club is gonna be, we're currently reading Destiny of the Republic by Candace Millard. We don't have a date, we had a few dates, but vacations and T-ball schedules and everything has kind of wrecked that, but if you'd be interested in joining us to discuss Destiny of the Republic, please shoot me an email, and we'll include you when we decide on a date.
Question, Commissioner Crisio. Will the author be present at this one?
No, Candace Millard will not be present at this book club. I did want to thank, I did want to thank the mayor for welcoming John Gallagher to our last book club event. I felt it was really successful, we had a nice turnout, and I thank the mayor for his influence in getting Mr. Gallagher here to discuss reimagining Detroit. I think the residents really benefited from the discussion, not only about Detroit and Pleasant Ridge regionally, but also what cities around the world are doing. We saw some fantastic examples of development throughout the world. So I appreciate the mayor for helping bring John Gallagher to our community, and I look forward to hosting again. We talked about bringing other local authors to participate in some future book events, and I think that has a lot of potential to bring us all together around various topics to discuss and share our ideas and our experiences, so.
I want to acknowledge, you're the one that invited him, I just happened to be here, so I just happened to know him, but that's...
Yeah, but all I had to do was drop your name.
Well, next time you can tip Ben Affleck with it.
Yeah.
That should work. One other, one other thing, it's interesting talking about John. If you've read his column, and then, I think it's Thursday night, the whole issue of covering up I-375, what are we gonna do with I-375? After it destroyed Paradise Valley, will we bring it back and get rid of it as an expressway and turn it into just a regular thoroughfare, connect east and downtown, East Park City? We can think of that as we want to fill in the ditch and get rid of this thing that we have with I-696 and make it a much more usable, walkable, more connectable way, so. December, we'll talk about that. Do I, if there's nothing else, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn, Mayor.
Do I support?
Very formal.
You stand the jury. Thank you.